Deputy Chair Hudno?
Here.
Commissioner Whale? Commissioner Miller?
Here.
And Commissioner Jenkins?
Here.
As our alternate, you have any voting rights, but you certainly can come in. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a court. Let's move to the approval of minutes. Have each of you had an opportunity to read the meetings from our October 7th? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as submitted, or are there any amendments?
Said motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor with the exception of Commissioner Jenkins, say aye.
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 The minutes and the motion has carried. Of ex parte disclosure, I have any other commissioners engaged in any off of the record communications with applicants, developers, neighbors, other stakeholders regarding any other projects before the commission or outside of the public hearing process? Councilman Gutenberg?
No.
Vice Chair Hudno?
No.
Commissioner Whale?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Jenkins?
No.
Neither have I. At this time in the agenda, we'll pause for, to see if there are any public comments. We have none. We'll move to Director Dooley to walk us through the matters of review and approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Banks. The first item on our agenda is major subdivisions 306-2018. This is a time extension for the Steeplechase development. Project location is west of Crane Highway, east of Buckeye Circle. The applicant is Ron Reimer. Before I give my brief presentation on this, I want to do some administrative matters of correction. I spoke to Mr. Reimer on Friday, and there were some modifications I want to make to the record for the staff report. On the first page, the owner is just, Mr. Reimer explained was just Steeplechase Development Company LLC. The Berkshire Homes LLC should have been deleted from the staff report. Second correction is on the first paragraph, second, third sentence, first, second sentence. It should say the Steeplechase consisted of 486 residential units to be developed in two phases. Mr. Reimer had corrected the record to me to indicate that Phase 1 consisted of 193 units, Phase 2, 199 units, and Phase 3, 94 units, for a total of 486 units. There were additional 95 units added to the original 94 units for Steeplechase when they added 9.49 acres to the subdivision back in 2018. So it's, again, what we're asking for tonight is a time extension for the subdivision for the remaining 189 units within the subdivision. And then lastly, before you, I submitted, or to all of you, the time extension request that was previously done back in, on January 21st of 2025 this year. This was the missing time extension that staff was unable to locate until Mr. Reimer provided some documentation to show that a time extension was done for his project to cover the period between December, between December 5th of 20, December, yeah, December 5th of 2024 to December 5th of 2025. So to be clear, you have another time extension request that in your packet, that is to cover from December of 2025 to December of 2026. So the extension record is clear. And with that, I'll give a brief presentation on the Steeplechase time extension. There we go. So again, this is, the time extension concerns major site plans 30-2018. The applicant developers, Steeplechase Development, or Ron Reimer. Next slide, please. As again, as previously stated, that this time extension request covers the period from December 5th, 2025 to December 5th, 2026, one-year extension. The project in summary is a major site plan that was originally approved in February of 2005 for 193 units on 115.85 acres. In 2018, an additional 9.49 acres were added to the subdivision. The construction total of units, as I previously elaborated, it was for the entire, all three phases of development is scheduled 486 units. This particular third phase, which the time extension request is being made by Mr. Reimer for, is for 189 units. There are no changes to the preliminary plat map before you for time extension. And the time extension request from Mr. Reimer is due to lack of water allocation for his subdivision, which has been a reoccurring issue with other development. Staff has added conditions of approval for the time extension. I'll draw your attention to the, to the special conditions in here, or conditions, Conditions 9. Condition 9 recommends that the, study that was originally on for the subdivision.
And it continues to be a subject that comes up from residents with a great amount of safety concern, not just capacity, right, but the safety of that that intersection. And that is, I believe, the only large development in the town that has a single entry point. And that causes significant issues when there have been accidents up near the front. And those occur, you know, with some amount of frequency when you talk to residents, right? I don't have the specific numbers. But that does weigh on me when I look at, you know, having another traffic study there. And I can appreciate that there is a cost associated with it. I don't know the specifics of the cost. However, you know, because of the particular issues around this development and it having a single entrance, it makes me want to be leaning towards having an additional traffic study done because it goes to the broader picture that we're trying to evaluate for the public good related to entry and exit points to that development.
Just in the interest of full disclosure, I live in Steeplechase. So that's just.
As do I.
Yes. So are there any additional comments, questions, Mr. Reimer, or anything else from you?
No, I appreciate everyone's consideration, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Director Dooley, anything else before we?
No, ma'am.
Move forward. So is there a motion on the recommendation with the conditions for the Steeplechase extension?
Said motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Goenberg, what say you?
Yes.
Co-chair, huh, no?
Yes.
Commissioner Whale?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
I'm a yes. We are unanimous, and the extension is approved. Thank you, Mr. Reimer.
That was approved with those conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Director Dooley? Stand back to you.
The next item on the agenda is for another time extension. This concerns Major Subdivision 606-2022. They prod the, this is the Agroopia subdivision located generally northwest of La Plata Road, La Plata, excuse me, La Plata Road and west of Radio Station Road. The applicant is Lorenzi Dodd and Gunnil. The owner is RJ Earnshaw. I believe Mr. Earnshaw may be online, just for the commission's reference. Or I'm sorry. Oh, you're here, okay. I've not met Mr. Earnshaw in person, so I can assure you that he is here. Okay. First slide, please. Okay. This is, the next two slides is a general overview of the Agroopia subdivision as it currently exists and is proposed for completion. Next slide. Next slide, please. And this time extension is to cover the period 2020, August 3, 2024 through August 3, 2026. For this particular request, staff was unable to find a prior staff report identifying that the previous time extension exists. However, giving staff turnaround, both in the planning department and in the town as a whole, it was unable to be found, but this is, of course, no fault of the applicant. Staff believes that the, for administrative purposes, the prior extension, assuming it was not already approved previously, could be incorporated with this time extension in arrears, if you will. So we're covering the period that should, may have and should have occurred previously, as well as the covering the period from August 3, 2025 to August 3, 2026. So Major Subdivision for Agroopia was approved originally in February of 1999 for up to 1,200 units on 255.03 acres. In 2018, the property rezoned to PDAG, which means Plan Development Agroopia, because it has its unique planning design. On August 3, 2022, the Major Subdivision was amended to its current configuration for the development of a total of 708 units. The Major Subdivision has a remainder of 220 units to be built within Sections 8 and 9, as well as condominium areas 1, 2, and 3. There are no proposed changes with the preliminary plat. And as in the previous application, the applicant is requesting the time extension due to the lack of water allocation from the town. Again, staff has provided conditions of approval for the project and has discussed the project time extension with the applicant and also has included an updated traffic study request or condition, as well as to demonstrate compliance for the parkland dedication. As this is another application that the records are a little bit difficult to find at this point. But again, it's staff's intent to work with Mr. Earnshaw collaboratively and cooperatively to resolve that issue, to ensure that the La Plata municipal code is being followed for the development. And with that, I have nothing further to add. Happy to answer any questions. As you know, Mr. Earnshaw is in the audience to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Is there anything you'd like to add?
As to actual parks and stuff, we just donated a year and a half ago, five acres park. I can get the deed out and give it to you that you guys accept it. You probably not aware of it. The traffic study, I don't have an issue with it. I just don't know what it's going to do for us. We stayed highway at the intersection with Radio Station Road 48, just did the light. You guys just had the light done for Pine Grove. The next section, if you could go back one slide for me? I think it's on the other slide. There you go. A little bit hard to see because of where it is, but this will go into Pine Grove in the back. So like I said, doing this study, I don't think it's going to show anything that's going to help to do it. We're not, I mean, subdivision hadn't changed. We did the traffic study. We added two lanes on Route 48. We did part of the intersection that's there years ago. There's supposed to be two additional lanes added by the county that will come down from the parkway now, all the way down through the schools and through front of Agroopia. If you're ever driven by there, you'll notice that all the trees and stuff are way back, and I get yelled at all the time by the HOA why we're not filling that in. But two times now, the county's going out there, put stakes in the ground. We're going to start this highway, and then they pull it back up because of budget restraints. Like I said, if you really need to study, we'll do it. I don't know what, what good it's going to come out of it from my standpoint because we're surrounded about everything. I guarantee you, traffic has changed in that area since we started this project. Schools have been added. I don't, to the, I doubt it. Did the county school system, when they just did the big parking lot back there, did they have to do a traffic study to add 182 individual parking spaces that you just did? Did they do any study when, and I'm kind of being like Ryan, Ryan, but you see things ago, you want to put the money out, but anybody else have to do that? Did Pine Grove did a study when they came through our neighborhood, which wasn't supposed to happen, and added on the piling and went in there and put all these houses? If so, I'd like to have a copy of that so I can pass it on to whoever does the study and say, sure, how that impact wasn't due to my subdivision, it was due to Pine Grove not crossing the back like they were told the first time and coming through the subdivision. So, you know, there's impacts that I have nothing that I can do to help, I don't think. But if it's required, it's required. If I am required and I find out that it doesn't do anything, I'm going to come back to you guys and say, hey, can you put it off another people to help mitigate? Well, I did it for no real reason. That's all. I mean, nothing against everybody here. I've been dealing with this project for years and years. I have not been around for about a year and a half coming to the meetings. But as I can tell, Mr. Jenga's name is, you're probably like the 15th different group that I've dealt with over the years from the area. Went to school here, from kindergarten up to high school. Knew the area very well, been on many, many, many projects with the town and continue to do it. I'm a lifetime person here. I want to keep the reputation up. I'm not coming in here like a Lennar, doing my business and getting the heck out of Dodge. We want to be here, want to be part of it. So thank you, guys. I know you're doing a good work, but also this man's got to get through a lot of records that definitely are messed up because I've seen them. Feel sorry for you because a lot of the people, no, but a lot of people that were in important jobs that passed away, changed over. Think I've been through nine mayors, four town council, changed over completely. Really, you guys literally went from one side to the other. And I can't even tell you how many town managers that I've been with. So I had a brother-in-law, it was one way back years ago. So good luck if you need something out of me. I'll try my best to help you out. If you need town history, anybody wants to come to me, like I said, I've been here since I was a kindergartner, so I can probably help you out more than other people in town. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. And we absolutely understand your concerns and your questions and your frustrations. So we appreciate.
Say, if I do it between 6:30 and 7:30 in the morning, or between 2:30 and 5:30 in the afternoon. So it's kind of, we're kind of in that weird spot where we're county roads, town La Plata roads, and state highway. That kind of puts us in a different mode. And we, you know, I had recommendations that got shot down years ago. We should go through Hickory Ridge and Hickory Ridge still fit. And we had to reevaluate and do a cul-de-sac and all this other stuff. And, you know, if you decided that's something you wanted to do, we explore that. Like, it's kind, I don't know how else you could get in out of that subdivision or how else we can improve anything around to make a major difference. And park wise, I got a lake. I would have some work for this. I'll give it all to the town because HOA, having to deal with a keep up of it later on is going to be costly and whether it gets done or not, when I'm gone, I don't know from that side of it.
Thank you again, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Are there any questions, Councilman Goenberg?
Maybe just again, with the scope of the traffic study, how far does a traffic study in this case go into the surrounding road networks? As an example, we have, you know, with this upcoming project with the Charles Street corridor, the safety enhancements that are going to go on there, does this traffic study scope get into any of that part of the network or is it much more closer in?
It's really going to, the scope of the study, what we, to start with, I have not been able to find the original traffic study that was done, at least to this point. We would, the basis of that, of an updated study would be to look at the original scope of the study to see what's changed. Maybe additional roads have been added. There's been modifications and account for those things. But we're really looking at the background, what's development that's occurred in Agroopia and immediately around it. And then the additional units that would be built as part of this time extension. The additional work that the state's looking to do for the traffic calming along Charles Street, something I'd probably want to confer with our, with the traffic engineer to determine whether or not it's applicable. It really has to be more the traffic calming than anything else. But I, so I can't really answer that question for that aspect of it, but we fundamentally base it on what's been done, if we can find the original traffic study, and then look immediately around the access points in and out of the subdivision. That's what we're really looking for.
Okay. Part of the record search for the original traffic study, does that involve interfacing with the applicant on seeing if they have it in their records or is it just on the town side?
I'm more than happy to accept any records that Mr. Earnshaw has for that traffic study. Yeah, that would be helpful, and we can then have another copy of it.
Okay. So, all right, so just for clarification then, so we haven't exhausted all sources of the original traffic study. That's one, if we can get it from the applicant. The second part is the scope, it sounds like, of the traffic study is limited to the immediate intersections that interface with the development and don't actually go into the broader network that would be carrying traffic away in either direction, either through Route 6 or Radio Station Road.
Yes.
Okay.
In general, that's how we would normally look at it.
All right, understood. Thank you.
Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Whale, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Miller?
No questions.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Thank you. Mr. Earnshaw is right. He's been around longer than me, but I do remember when the subdivision was first started. And I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Earnshaw in the past. And full disclosure, when I worked for the town and then I was on the council, a couple of observations and comments. Mr. Earnshaw is correct. Because of the original subdivision, I suspect, and I'm speculating, that the state, because they border 488, they had some kind of an analysis because he is right, they required him to put that extra merge lane in at the entrance, two lanes in. So that would have, in the test, probably sparked some kind of an analysis or study. So I suspect it's out there someplace, whether Mr. Earnshaw has it or state highway, I'm not sure. And then at one time, the county was going to work with the town and the state highway administration and the county, because Radio Station was the county road, about thinking about putting in a traffic circle where you now have the new signal. And much to my chagrin, too late now, I wish that, in fact, I advocated for that about four or five years ago. And then Mr. Earnshaw is correct. I do remember at one time, the county had a capital improvement project for Radio Station Road to widen it, but also flatten away that curve there that you go around. You know, as you pass every copia, you have that kind of frankly unsafe curve there. They were going to flatten all that out and make it a much more safer highway. And I don't know what the latest capital improvement plan for the county says about that project, but there was once, and maybe still out there, some project to make improvements to Radio Station Road, a county road. So I'm just trying to give you a little bit perspective of the history of that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Dooley, anything?
No, ma'am.
Additional? So can I get a motion with respect to the recommendation from the planning department with respect to the extension for AraCopa? With the conditions, one correction. Given what Mr. Earnshaw just said with respect to having just donated five acres, is the condition for the parkland still in play?
I would say yes, because I don't have a, I don't have a complete record or even any record for that matter to demonstrate compliance or not. I'm looking to try to gather that information. It's really, as I explained to Mr. Earnshaw on the phone last week, this is more of an accounting thing for staff to make sure it was done. If Mr. Earnshaw is telling me that it is, great, let's just get the records together. And so we have it documented in our files. That's really it. There's no suspicion it was or wasn't done.
Madam Chair, if I could ask this question, with regard to the traffic study with, and the question I think is for you, Mr. Dooley, the practical application of a traffic study in the scenario that was described by the applicant, which is that the traffic study would have to include, because of the layout of the neighborhood, there are two Pine Grove neighborhoods that use that same entrance and exits. How would the town in practical application apply a mitigation as an output of that traffic study to this applicant relative to those entry and exit points?
Well, depending on what the findings are, there's, some of the mitigation may not be feasible. If it's not, then that's something that would, that would need to be addressed by the commission to determine, you know, is there, does the commission, as part of a revision to the condition, I would be brought back appropriate? If there was mitigations that couldn't be done, that's how administratively I would handle it, is bring it back to the commission, explain why the mitigation cannot be done, and ask the commission how they wish to proceed or make a recommendation on how to proceed.
Is there an ability through, and this gets into one of those questions where it may be, you know, outside your scope with, and we would need legal counsel, right? But if there was a mitigation, could the mitigation be shared between both developers, given the state that the Pine Grove neighborhoods are done and complete effectively?
Well, I think anything's, certainly anything's possible. The, it depends on, I guess, on the relationship between the two developers. And if there's a desire to want to work together, Pine Grove does have its requirements for, to do its own traffic study every three years over 750 units. It may ultimately be an issue for Pine Grove in the future if they, if there's a traffic mitigation that would require some collaboration or cooperation. As it's, particularly if there's a, but there'd have to be a direct nexus between the Pine Grove development and the mitigation.
For those specific neighborhoods.
Specific thing, yes.
And so I'm assuming those neighborhoods, I believe, are built out and that.
But the overall, correct. If there's, if the plats are already final and done, it's where there's not much you can do.
Right. So the question that I'm struggling with, with that condition, right, is that are we imposing? And again, I don't know the scope of what the cost is, right? I don't know how big of a cost we're talking about here and the impact. But the applicant has stated, you know, that that represents a burden to him. And so are we, where we don't have a clear path, once we have received it, a new traffic study in this case, as part of this Condition 10, if the town isn't, have a clear path of how we're going to deal with it, I'm concerned about us imposing that on this applicant if we don't know how we're going to use it.
Well, the intent is to understand, is there additional, is there any additional mitigations required for the development? Certainly that we can impose as part of the development process on the applicant. If there's mitigation measures that we can't impose, then it becomes an informational thing for the town and for the residents to demonstrate we've done our due diligence, but there's a limitation on what we can, what we can do. But it's a matter of informational purposes, if nothing else.
Okay.
I don't believe I heard the applicant say it was a burden necessarily. I think he said he would do it if that's what we required him to do. But then laid out the perimeters around where his concerns were for the need for it. So I wonder if as part of our recommendation that we add a caveat that the conditions apply only after further research and discussions with the applicant, yield no additional information that would remove the conditions? You can, can you come to the mic?
Can you?
Rose, if I'm going to do something I know is going to help the town?
Wait. Director Dooley, can you give him the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. If I got to spend $40,000 or $50,000, which it probably would cost, I would rather spend that money to do something I know will definitely benefit the town than something that goes through the process just to go through the study to say, hey, there's nothing we can do that's going to improve for that neighborhood. It is my only concern. I mean, like I told you, I'm here for the town. I want to be with the town, but there is a point when you look at stuff and go, all right, we're just taking this money and throwing it away. I'd rather you tell me, oh, I want another pavilion or I want another whatever, something else in the community that helps that community or something that is worthwhile than just, no offense against engineers that are in here, but to spend $50,000 to say, oh, you know, maybe we could do something, but we're not sure we can. That's, you know, my concern. If we didn't have the other entrance going to Pine Grove, if we hadn't already, if I didn't touch 30, oh, not 30, touch 48 and the state had already kind of done what they've done, they're not going to let you put a light Atlanta drive. You know, it's too close, there are conditions for that. As far as a study, I might be able to get you the study for 48. I guarantee there was a study down there. You've got two entrances, just put on 48 for the St. Charles that are within a mile. So I guarantee you that they had to do some kind of study there on 48 for the traffic flows that are there. I don't know if the town has any additional property that's been annexed that maybe I missed at some Radio Station Road in the last few years. If there's been any studies there, I just know the county didn't, they didn't do studies. They just go do what they want to do at the school board. They do what they want to do at their properties. And it's, you know, we're here, we're doing it, we own the property, go on. All that property there was government property my father-in-law got for free years ago when it was, and it was annexed into the town. Not throwing his name up, I'm just saying that's where all that property came from. It was Jesse L. Starkey, and that's how they got that. And that's how their road got through there years ago. So one thing to say, and you brought it up earlier. When we initially bought this project, I bought it from, there was councilmen that were here and a county and attorney. We dropped it from 1,500 down to the 712 to make the streets wider, to make it a better community, not have high rises that were approved at the time. They had five-story apartment buildings that were in there, different things. And we kind of said, no, it's too much for this particular town. So not trying to get out of it, but we have tried to improve it and not have it to look like a city popped up in the middle of nowhere. Anyway, but thank you.
No, thank you for the background and thank you for all you do. So let's go back. Is there anything else?
Yeah, Chair, I was just going to just kind of reiterate that part of staff's challenge is we don't know what the original traffic study was. The records are wherever they are. And our staff personally does not know all of the details that went into the traffic study. I'm looking at this as just being a good steward of environmental review and making sure that the towns doesn't, is using opportunities to ensure that its traffic is properly managed from the development. There may be no impacts, and I hope from Mr. Earnshaw there are none. I just don't know, but I want to at least bring it to the council's attention. You all need to make that choice, but it's certainly staff's responsibility to make sure that you're informed.
I appreciate that, and I hope Mr. Earnshaw understands this is not intended to be punitive or it's intended to have a full record and documentation. So I go back to the motion on the recommendation from the planning department with respect to AraCopa, adding the caveat that upon additional research and discussion with the applicant, the conditions may or may not apply. Is there a motion?
Ma'am, real quick, so we're saying approve with the conditions, consider the condition withdrawn, provided there's new information that reveals itself?
Correct.
Okay. And that this is regardless of whether, like, the applicant is able to produce a copy of the study that might have the information?
No, no, the, if the applicant is able to provide additional information that would satisfy the record and/or the need, whether we need a traffic study or not. as well as the parkland. Is that?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna, I was gonna maybe rephrase it a little bit in a way that maybe might be a little perhaps clearer for everybody with your begging your indulgence.
No, please do.
Is to say that if the director of community, something to the effect of the director of community development, upon further review of any new information regarding traffic impacts or the project are discovered or provided by the applicant, the director shall make a determination whether or not a traffic study is deemed appropriate or necessary to mitigate potential traffic impacts of the development as it exists or proposed to exist. And so it gives me the flexibility to look at the information that that Mr. Earnshaw provides, as well as anything else I may discover in my records to determine if that traffic study is really warranted or not.
That was pretty good wordsmithing off the cuff, so I appreciate that, so.
Don't ask me to repeat it, I'll have to listen to the record, but.
The recommendation with what he said. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Okay, it works for Mr. Earnshaw.
Yeah, so I would make a motion that we approve the the conditions with condition 10 modified as stated by Director Dooley, so that we, so giving him flexibility to continue to work with the applicant on records and make a determination of the utility of a potential need for a traffic study.
Is there a second? A second. Councilman Gudenberg, we'll say you.
Yes.
Co-Chair Hutno?
Yes.
Commissioner Will?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
I am a yes, the motion is carried and approved. Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Director Dooley, we're moving to the matters of discussion or recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. First slide, please. So our last, our next item or last item is a under matters of discussion or recommendation. This concerns a, the residential, the commission's desire to discuss residential street widths for new subdivisions. This is for a discussion item only at this time. That's not it. Okay, I think we're having a technical problem. Chair, I apologize, it looks like the wrong PowerPoint presentation was sent to to Ms. Phillips, so I don't have the PowerPoint presentation. I can do one of two things, I can carry on with it without the benefit of the commission having this in front of them or being able to see it. Or we can take a few minutes and I can make copies for everybody, but it will take probably at least 10 minutes.
Is there a way you can email it to the commissioners? So we'll.
I would have to do that from my computer, so I can, I can, I can certainly, I can send it to to Ms. Phillips, and then she would email it to everybody.
I'm fine with moving forward, so and if you will get us the slides at a later point, that'd be fine.
Yes, ma'am, we can send those out to you tomorrow, straight away. Okay. So this project or discussion item is again concerning residential street policy for residential street policy design consideration. The background on this is that at the last planning commission meeting, October 7th, the planning committee, the planning commission voted to discuss developing a potential street design policy to provide development guidance on the implementation of the town's right-of-way and roadway provisions for new streets and for streets and new subdivisions. Article three, which is concerned, street designs in construction layout under section 170-9, design of La Plata municipal, of the La Plata Municipal Code, identifies multiple street classifications in the town of La Plata. This one is something you would have to see visually, but it's actually, it's in your, in your packet under on page. Have it. This was, it's, I believe it's attachment one in your packet, you should have the various road classifications of the town.
I believe it's labeled attachment two.
This is attachment two? I don't have the, those attachments on the staff report. That's the, I had definitions for that section.
Yeah, that's labeled attachment number two.
Okay.
Yep.
Apologies for that. Bye, Bo. Okay. The town has multiple, anyway, the town has multiple street design classifications and standards for those classifications. It's important to realize that under section 170-9, that these design standards for all of our road classifications are simply minimum standards. So they can be, they can't be diminished, but they can be increased. The code doesn't specifically identify it, but it's, but increasing these standards would obviously have to have a nexus and promote somehow the public health, safety and welfare to use increased standards. But those that are identified are what the minimum standards are. And for secondary local streets and tertiary local streets, they do require planning commission approval to use 50-foot wide rights away with 26-foot of roadway pavement or asphalt, as well as for tertiary streets, which require minimums 27-foot wide right-of-way and 26 feet of asphalt or roadway paving. Section 170-3 of the La Plata Municipal Code provides definitions for primary local streets, secondary local streets and tertiary local streets. And these definitions are important because they are the primary road classifications that are used within the residential subdivisions that I'm aware of in town. The challenge is that, and I'll read these to you for your, for your edification, since they're not up on the screen. The challenge is, is that these street classification definitions fundamentally read exactly the same, and they're somewhat nebulous in staff's opinion. And I'll read them to you. Local, local street primary, quote, "A street which the predominant function is to access to abutting land, traffic movement is a secondary function." Local street, secondary, "A street which the principal function is to access to abutting land, traffic movement is a minor function." The difference between predominant and principal and minor and secondary are a little bit wonky in terms of what the actual implementation is supposed to mean. I can tell you that in broadly speaking, and staff researching that issue, that prime fundamentally, local primary streets appear to be streets that that collect traffic off of secondary streets. There are generally no driveway or curb cuts. They basically collect traffic from the secondary streets that come off of that local primary street, and they filter it to a, to an arterial street or a collector's street. That's really what the intent is. But the way that most development occurs, past, present and future, primary and secondary streets are somewhat, there's some meshing between that. They're not, it's not strictly this or that, they're sort of blended together. I've seen collector arterial streets that have, that have access off those, off the streets for homes, sometimes they're, they're new, sometimes they're existing or developments. But that's, I think, what the original intent is. But it, the way this is written, it's a little bit challenging to read. And that definition is also in your, that one is in your staff report on page, on page three at the bottom, under the footnotes. You can read that, it's your leisure. But the tertiary street classification is, quote, "A classification would be reserved only for streets designed, designed to difference with two different streets. It may be applied to cul-de-sacs streets or looping through a single development or access point or points are from the same street." And that comes from the footnote five of table 170-9. Again, the, trying to get your arms around what that definition is really in trying to intend to do, is not really well-written, in my opinion. It makes sense that the, it's supposed to be for a very small area or limited area. It's not to provide, it's not to, it's not designed to replace a primary local street where it's filtering traffic to someplace else that can accommodate large volumes of traffic. And then turning your attention to cul-de-sacs, the definition for, excuse me, the code requirements for cul-de-sac under section 170-11H under layout of the Playa Municipal Code says in part, "Cul-de-sac shall not be allowed unless the planning commission determines that no other road configuration is practicable. When cul-de-sacs, when a cul-de-sac is permitted, it shall have a paved circular turnaround area having an outside diameter of at least 80 feet. Cul-de-sacs located at the end of the tertiary streets may have a minimum paved circular turnaround area of at least 70 feet." So fundamentally, it's what it's telling us is that for, for a primary or a primary local or a secondary local, you need to have an 80-foot wide diameter of the paving from one side of the cul-de-sac to the other. And this is to allow for, for the cars to easily make one turning movement. The tertiary streets can actually be reduced in size for that cul-de-sac to 70, to 70 feet. But for larger vehicles, of course, that creates potential problems with them trying to make a smooth turn, particularly if there's cars parked on the, on the cul-de-sac current. So some of the issues of concern with, with the staff is identified in the staff report, and I've briefly outlined here, is that the street definitions appear to be unclear or not well-written. The minimum street cul-de-sac diameter appears to staff as it's inadequate, particularly for larger vehicles or life safety vehicles potentially. A 50-foot street right-of-way with a 26-foot roadway width is narrow. Secondary impacts of narrow streets may include vehicular street parking. And this means that if street parking is on a 26-foot road, is you have streets, you have cars parked on both sides of the street, assuming an eight-foot wide parallel parking space, you've got basically a 10-foot wide roadway to get through between the cars. On the other hand, if you don't have any on-street parking, this becomes an issue where a car is going to park that are service vehicles, as well as, you know, for visitors, friends that would come to visit, the homeowners. The, and so this would creates a constrictive vehicular maneuverability for two-way traffic. What may occur is that it may impede the flow of traffic without an adequate street lane widths. So imagine having cars potentially on both sides or even on one side. You could have a situation where two cars going in opposite directions, one has to pull over as best it can to allow another car to pass, and then the other car can, can move on. So you don't have a, a, a natural consistent flow of traffic. There's a start and stop, and there's a maneuverability issue. So this also creates challenges for large, for large private and public service vehicles, such as utility trucks, trash trucks, snowplows, et cetera, that service residential neighborhoods. And of course, as I mentioned, fire truck trailers, such as with the town of La Plata has to use for residential fires. It has, it has a ladder on that truck. These trucks are typically about nine, in this case, nine feet wide, 60 feet deep. So it's a big, it's a big piece of machinery that's going down a fundamentally very narrow street. This creates problems for the fire truck if you have at least, if you have cars parked on, on at least one side of the street. The reason for that is if they need to use the fire ladder, there are, is something that's called stabilizers. The stabilizers extend out of both sides of the truck so that it holds the truck in place while the fire ladder is being used. The problem is, is that it needs 19 feet of clearance on the street for the width to be able to accommodate that. If even one car is parked next to it, then technically the road is not wide enough if you assume an eight-foot wide parallel parking space on the street. Eight-foot parallel parking space is, staff has used that number because that is the minimum requirement for a parallel park, off-street parallel parking space for like in a commercial development for parking. So planning commission policy options. Staff has provided five options on how the commission may wish to act upon addressing residential street designs in addition to three options for addressing cul-de-sac widths or diameters. These are on pages nine through 11 on your staff report. The street right-of-way widths, staff suggests considering a variety of street widths ranging from 50 feet, which is in our current code, to 60 feet, which is also in our current code, with vehicular roadway paving ranging from 26 feet, which is in our code, to 40 feet, which would be new for a roadway width requirement. All potential street right-of-way options include five-foot wide sidewalks and five-foot wide landscape planners for our current code. And these are outlined in the matrix that staff has provided on pages nine through 11 in your staff report, so you can see how that aligns. Page eight of the staff report also includes some policy considerations for the application of any planning commission's street design policy for discussion. So at this time, staff recommends that the planning commission provide its feedback and direction on how it wishes to proceed with developing a street design policy if desired. If the commission supports developing such a policy, staff will work with the town attorney for his feedback and comments and return to the commission for further review and potential action. Tonight, to aid me in this presentation, I have the Director of Public Works, Wilson Cochran, online, should also be Ryan Pike, who is one of the consultant engineer for the town. Oh, there he is. Welcome, come on up. And I'm not sure if he's still online or not, but I also had Fire Chief Hutchins, La Plata volunteer fire department, who is to join us as well. He had another engagement, so I'm not sure if he's still there or not. But that's the team that I've put together for, to answer your questions tonight. There's also in your, in your, in your packet, street cross-sections that staff has downloaded from the Charles County Government website. These are basically there to help you visualize street cross-sections and to sort of make this, make sense of. street cross-sections and to sort of make this make sense of of what this matrix is trying to say. And a lot of development companies, since the town doesn't have its own cross-sections, use these as a basis for developing specialized cross-sections for the town of La Playa. And those you will see from time to time or have seen in your plans that you reviewed for preliminary plat maps. So I thought this might be a a good tool to aid in the in the commission's discussion on this topic. That's all I have. Ryan, if you have anything that you'd like to to add to it, but we are here for questions. Thank you.
Oh geez, I was pulling it up on my phone. Are there any questions?
I have one.
You want to go first?
Okay, I just have one question. I recall it was the fire chief before said that, you know, the fire trucks, they're just getting bigger, you know, over time. And so I I didn't see it in here, but let's just say if we went with option two, I believe it says 100 feet for the cul-de-sac and curbside parking, you know, required, things like that, I see if we look at that option two for like cul-de-sac designs. If we're saying that over time, these fire trucks are getting bigger, then is there something that can be put in here where we revisit this in a certain period of time so that we can kind of meet the standards that we're moving along with, you know, the needs of the fire trucks so that we're building appropriately?
Well, I think the two things. If the if if this is, if the developments already occurred out there, you're you're kind of stuck with what's what's been built.
Kind of in the future, though.
But probably in the future, if there's the ability to go back and correct something that's already been built is pretty much slim to none. But if you're looking at trying to say, look, we're we're good with the way it is right now, that in the future, if, and we'd have to determine what would be an appropriate objective standard to bring it back to you to have this consideration. We can certainly have that discussion and work with the with the emergency services to determine what might be an appropriate objective standard to bring that back to the commission with.
Thank you.
I think the challenge right now is, in part, is that the the town code allows for a lot of flexibility in our design standards. And again, for secondary local and tertiary roads, it does require a planning commission's approval. There are no findings for when the commission or when staff should recommend narrower streets, if it's appropriate. And this is the the challenge that that I've wrangled with, and I know Mr. Pike has wrangled with, in determining, hey, are these streets really appropriate, given the number of lots being created and the potential traffic impacts that may be created from just from the number of of units that are going to be accessing these roads directly or indirectly?
Councilman Gutenberg?
Yes, sure. So so first, I really appreciate the amount of detail that staff has provided us here. It's it's really nice to see this amount of detail being prepared so soon after we we all experienced the issue we did that we discussed with the La Grange development, right? And so this is very much appreciated context and the amount of detail that you provided. Spent a lot of time going through it. I think it's it's very this is one of those questions, one of those issues that has no easy answers. And there's there's impacts to these choices that are that are laid out here. So so a couple of things I I want to say for for the benefit of the rest of the members of the commission. So we the couple of choices. One is, you know, do we pursue a policy change or do we pursue pursue a code change? So one of the issues there is the the capacity of town staff to work on multiple things in parallel. And so, you know, we we had meetings in here a few months ago about an APFO. And since then, the the council has prioritized town staff on that APFO. And so so that is what they are working on now. So I think from from my view, i- in the context of this commission, I would recommend that we pursue, you know, looking at policy first before, because that's just what staff has the capacity to even deal with if we want to move forward. Second to that, there there's trade-offs also to be made here on the way a policy would be implemented itself. You know, when we had the discussion with the the applicant for the La Grange development, that the issue was around primary versus secondary roads. And we we talked about whether or not we could just interpret code in a way that allowed us to accommodate what the fire chief was asking for. And there there is an avenue where you can interpret code that way, but we didn't have really any precedence. And we had, there were specific things to that developer's case and the timeline that they were on that made it difficult for us to be able to change so late in the direction that the town has given them over the years, right, that we could apply that. And so I think what Director Dooley is is giving us a pathway for here is to create a policy that will establish the way we intend for code to be interpreted. So that that is good. But when you start really digging into this and and looking at those numbers, if you look at those, they're they're very plain, but boy, there's a lot of detail in them in in the cross-sections of the street designs. And so the devil's in the details of those. So if we if we do purely what the fire department has said they need, and you can see with the pictures, there's very compelling pictures of the doors opening on the trucks and and the way the apparatus works in those streets. But the the way the policy is applied for primary and secondary roads would be effectively a 25% to 30% increase in the amount of asphalt that is laid for a street, right? And so the unintended consequence of that is, is that the stormwater infrastructure is going to have to be 30% larger. That is a bigger cost to the developer, which gets, in the case of a large development, gets passed on in the the bond for the special tax zone. So that that's a cost to residents. It's it's a it's a longer ONS cost for the size of the infrastructure that has to be maintained, which is directly transferable into the fees that we pay, not necessarily in property taxes, but in our monthly or, excuse me, our quarterly bills when we have that stormwater charge, right? And so just going that route purely, well, it at first look, it's like clearly you want to do what what's best for the fire department. And and I think we all wanted that when we talked about that with La Grange. When we look about, when we look at how this applies, though, how do you apply primary, secondary streets? In concept, a primary street, you could interpret it as being, well, this is just a street that that delivers traffic. And that was the the argument that the the applicant made is it wasn't a primary street because it had driveways on it. So, right, but this is North America. Every street has driveways on it. And by that definition, we why we could just throw out the primary street, right? But I think I wonder what when I look at some of these plats, if there's not an ability to further refine a policy in a way that, you know, perhaps, and this we don't have yet, but this is for discussion, right? This is a first look at this, you know, that that if we look at AgroCopia, you know, just to take as an example, somebody just looked in tonight. There are some streets in AgroCopia where, no matter where you live in AgroCopia, you are traveling down that street to get to your house. I would argue that that's a primary street. There are other streets where the only reason you would be on that street is to pull into your house on that street and likely you would. And I could argue that that would be a good, good, good use of a secondary street. And there's two different road widths there, right? And that is a way you could apply a policy like this that doesn't just blanket increase everything by 30%, right? But but it would throttle it some some amount so that, you know, the the application of the policy would give wider streets on the most heavily traveled in the most probably direct routes of of a fire apparatus, but also give you scalability that would allow for some compromise on, you know, the the issue in general, right? And so that that's really my comment on this. And 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 I and and I just offer that to the rest of you as we consider what we do going forward. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gutenberg. Any any thoughts, Commissioner Wille?
I just want to say that's a good point. I hadn't I hadn't thought about that. And that's a good example with with AgroCopia. I noticed kind of driving through there, you know, that's that's a really good example. So that it's definitely something to think about when looking at applying this as a policy. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Anything?
So you mentioned the APFO. We would need to prioritize what we're focusing on. So I guess what would be the timeline for this new potential policy? And how would we need to kind of rack and stack what's focused on?
Well, the APFO staff is, that's that staff will have a at least a draft of it before the end of the year. I think that's the town manager has promised that, and I'm going to make sure that that happens. So that's my my next priority, really. For for this particular discussion, staff would be looking at getting feedback from the from the commission in terms of how it wishes to proceed with this. Based on that information, staff would then share that with the with the town attorney, get their input with Mr. Pike, with the other, with Mr. Cochran and the other folks in the town that would that would have meaningful or need to have feedback or should have feedback in this policy and how it's developed. It's something that if we brought back anything, it's really going to depend on the ability for everybody to to collect their feedback and bring it back. I can't promise it would be done in December. It's likely it would it would occur sometime January on. But it's it's running sort of, it's it's a secondary, it's a secondary project, the APFO. Now, staff had found the opportunity to to take the time because we just had the time extensions to do, to put something together for you to at least to begin the conversation. And to have you think about how you might want a policy developed if this is something that the commission wants to do. So in short, if you had some very simple comments back, we can certainly direct those to the town attorney and and work with the internal staff. The more complex questions, they're going to, may take longer to do. But the APFO for traffic, for water, for school allocation, that's going to take my time from here on out to the end of the end of the year.
There's no way it doesn't make sense for the street design policy to be included in the APFO?
Well, I think that we need to get the APFO in place first. If the if depending on, depending on how this tracks, is it potential that, is it is it possible to include that as a future APFO like in a second, like a design manual or something? Absolutely. Could it be done at the same time? It it becomes a little bit more challenging because of of the staff time. It seems like a simple thing to do. But when you sit down and actually try to do it with all the other things that my department's responsible for doing, including not this, only this commission, but two other ones and all the other work, it it does provide, it's it's a challenge.
But can I do a follow-up to Commissioner Miller? As for the APFO, let's not do the chicken or the egg. For the, if if we move ahead with the policy, we can reference in the AP, or if the APFO moves ahead of the policy, we can reference that there's a policy, current and future, that would be, you know, a part of the APFO. So I don't think it's a chicken or egg situation that we would find ourselves in.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think just some of the other things, like impact, you mentioned stormwater and like the amount of new material that would require, and then does that now the plot line, plots are smaller and now like development costs go up. So I would just be, you know, want all those things considered as we kind of go forward.
It's it's streets, street and street design policy is is complicated. There's a lot of secondary impacts for whatever changes that are made to it. I think this Councilman Gutenberg brought that up in his initial comments, and he's absolutely spot on. But I I do think that Chair Banks made a really good, really good observation is that as we develop the APFO, there can certainly be a line in there that that a street, the street design policy is being developed for it that may be included within the APFO. I I look at the APFO as sort of a living document. As we need to change it or update it, we do it.
Yeah.
Makes sense. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenkins?
Thank you for the for the detail. As Councilman Gutenberg indicated, that's a lot of work, and thank you. I come at this from probably the 10,000-foot level based upon past work experience and experiences. And this is probably going to be a bridge too far. I think I I would just suggest that, for me, that there would be no rush for a policy. I think the current code is you have the ordinance, and you have this and this. We have, it's overwhelming and frankly confusing. And if you read it, it's probably 10 to 15 years old. So my opinion would be, to me, it's woefully out of date, fully recognizing that there's an issue with respect to fire safety. I I I get that. But I come at it from a different perspective that's maybe not necessarily down here yet. But if you read the ordinance, I read it tonight, it focuses on traffic. Traffic, traffic. Roads are also for pedestrians and cyclists, okay? And as Councilman Gutenberg alluded to, when you have increased pavement, you have increased speeding. And I can give you documents and studies that will document that. For instance, in my neighborhood, East Patuxent Road in Clark's Run, was a belt what I would call a collector. It's probably a 60-foot-wide right-of-way, and the pavement is probably, I bet you, at least 30 or 35 feet. And for some reason, I do not understand, they put a yellow stripe down the middle of the road. The speed limit in Clark's Run is 25 miles an hour. I will tell you, they put that stripe in, they're not going 25 miles an hour because I walk there every day, in the morning and in the afternoon. So my concern would be fully cognizant of the wear of fire safety and access. You increase pavement width, and you're going to have a problem with speeding because we have it now in La Playa. People don't want to believe that, but I've almost been hit twice, okay? Walking the dog and then on my bike in the last, within the last five years. The other related issue is that I I think there's some other standards that we could go out and research. For instance, let me get my phone up again. There's the National Association of City and Traffic Officials, NACTO. That's a relatively new organization, but they are out there analyzing and studying different road standards for different types of communities. And I'll, if it's okay, I will develop a memorandum and send it to the Director Dooley to get it to the commission. I've already started. I haven't unfortunately finished it yet. So I just think there's an opportunity for us to look at other standards other than just frankly, cut and paste from Charles County, which is probably 15 years old, those cross-sections. You're right, cross-sections are very helpful. But but I just don't think that we, it's an issue, and I get it, but I don't think that we should be rushing in and just to adopt something that frankly, to me, is woefully out of date. It's antiquated. It, and so for me, we we should be looking at, and I know the staff is constrained, and I get that, but I just think that there are other sources that we could research and analyze. Like today I found, or yesterday I found a a task force in Montgomery County, Maryland. Okay, La Playa is not Montgomery County. I get it. But they did a task force of the fire department and the planning department to talk about this very issue. And they have incorporated towns up there, too. But my point is that that we could do some other research to kind of get other best practices or templates or something other than just frankly, go into our current code. Because again, I think it's it's out of date, it's conflicting, it's it's been hot, not not anybody's fault, but it's just been cut and paste so many times it doesn't make sense. Because reading your material was great, but it kind of gave me a headache because you read this section says this, and this section says that. And then, so I just think we ought to do, focus on looking at other examples. I don't think we need to rush rush a policy. I do agree, Chair, that the policy could be amended or attached with the APFO. That is a critical issue. And then just my just my personal probably prejudice that that it's it's a larger issue that we need to kind of think about other forms of transportation other than just roads. Because roads are public right of ways. Because in my community, aren't sidewalks. And that's okay. But because you never put him back in Clark's Run because they probably don't want him, it's too expensive. My whole point is, so where do I walk? Say, I don't walk on somebody's lawn, but I gave you an example this morning. Walk on the other side of Clark's Run Road. Some cars are parking out all the time, so there's four of us walking with two dogs. And yeah, and you're right, maybe we should walk on one side versus not both of us on either side of the road. But people drive by and they see us and some of them just barely slow down. And then they wave at us as they go by and I'm going like, why are you waving at me? I mean, I've had to literally jump into somebody's lawn because some clown is doesn't want to slow down. But I digress. So I just think that, you know, there's an opportunity to maybe look at some other ideas and techniques and templates that are out there. And I will finish the memorandum hopefully shortly and send it to Director Dooley if that's okay and forward it to the commission. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Jenkins. Just to offer my little way in on this, I think your point is is well taken, Commissioner Jenkins, with respect to the the code being outdated. And I'm a I'm a little confused with respect to you acknowledging that, yet saying, let's not rush into a policy. I think rewriting a code is a more extensive
Oh, yeah.
process than putting a policy in place. I think we have the 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 Fire Department represented here. We've got Public Works represented here. I'm sure they would offer a test, well, information with respect to the the driving need, particularly with the Fire Department, the driving need for these wider roads and cul-de-sacs. I mean, you look at the pictures, it's an obvious disconnect. How we get to that policy, I think, is open for debate. What it looks like, when it gets rolled out is open for discussion. But I think I, you know, I am in favor of the policy. I think the policy should be written in a in a in a way that is broad enough that we can we can make some determinations along the way. And what I used to say in the policy applicability determinations. And we can also apply it in a way that is more broadly applicable. So that's my two cents. I appreciate the the presentation. I'm I'm a little at a loss because I didn't I left my documents on the desk at home. And so I'm not good with the phone or the or the iPad. So I didn't have the information before me, but the recommendations and the options, but I'll go back and look at those again. But I am in favor of moving forward with exploring the policy. I don't know what you want from us next, Director Dooley. Is it that we continue to explore the policy? Or that is there something else that you need to go back to do before you come back to the planning commission?
Well, at this time, I'll I'll give you two observations. I have other plat maps that will be coming to the to the commission that are in queue. Without obviously without a policy in place. I can only I can only encourage the the commission to take a careful look at the streets as staff will do as well and and our town engineering consultant will do as well and make some observations or recommendations. One of the challenges is that the that there may if the commission the commission may may it may decide that they want some streets wider. Potentially, they may want some design modifications, which the code allows you to do if the street right away is is 50 feet or less. That may, of course, make them on somebody unhappy. But the commission does have that that option. It's always better to have consistency so that staff knows, the development community knows what to anticipate from the commission. So until we until the commission, if it moves forward with developing a policy, there's we're still going to be in this sort of this wonky weird period where staff can only make observations about about what we feel about the roadway whiffs being proposed. But I've really nothing to other to 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 point to to say you need to do this other than what the code is, and the code is very is very loose. And which is good from the perspective, it provides flexibility, but maybe it's a little bit too flexible. Because there's not certainty with what you're going to get out of out of any particular roadway design in a subdivision. So that's that's one issue. As far as what I want out of from the commission tonight, I was hoping to kind of get a little bit more greater direction and say, hey, we like we 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 like this particular option or pursue this a little bit more or take this to the next level so that we have something I have something to work with. Because right now I don't really know what the commission wants.
I'm not sure are we? I'm personally not prepared to do that. Are and we I don't think we've had enough discussion to to be able to say, go forth with this option or that option. Can we put it on the on the agenda for next month?
Yes, ma'am, I can certainly do that and give you a little bit more time.
Would commit to to doing our due diligence and and coming forward with our thoughts on that, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, that that would be helpful for staff and then we at least know what what we're what we're what the commission wants to do. And that allows me to sort of activate resources that I need to look into or need to things I need to look into to to get the commission the information that they're looking for to be able to make informed choices.
Is there anything?
Yeah, if I could just offer a thought on that, right? So the 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 amount of development that is stacked up because of the water allotment issue is is significant. And I think there is an that there should be a sense of of urgency on our part because I think there is a public expectation that we will appropriately regulate the standards by which those things are those developers are going to apply to come in and do the work they're going to do on the property that they own. And and so if we are too cautious with this, we are going to find ourselves, I fear, in the same position we were with La Grange Development, where we are unable to apply a reasonable interpretation of the standards as they exist to get an outcome that we, I think, all felt what was more equitable to what the Public Safety Service providers are asking for and and Public Works, frankly, too. So I I think that we should be a little more firm with what we're asking Mr. Dooley to do. If there if I what I hear is that you're offering some capacity to make a a policy recommendation. Not something that we we necessarily have to implement the next meeting, but a a more mature policy so so that we can get to, you know, outcomes that I think the public expects of us in this case.
Yes, sir, that's that's well said. It's 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 trying to get to that next step. So that we can, again, continue to work on one or two options that the commission is interested in really pursuing and try to work out the details and the issues that that, you know, when you pull the string, what's going to happen? And so the commission is aware of how that policy may play out, its potential impacts that it may have. And any other issues that we may discover in doing our due diligence. But we have to take the next step to accomplish anything and and it's 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 challenging for for the the town staff not to be able to tell a to tell a somebody interested in developing the community what the councils, excuse me, what the commission's expectations are for developing a new subdivision. Does the commission want to to carry on and do the 50 foot wide street with with 26 foot of of asphalt or the roadway? Or do you want something a little bit larger? Because once when they start getting into the hard engineering, they become a lot less flexible because of the time and investment that's involved in putting some of these maps together.
So as Councilman Gutenberg referred to, we've got some rack and stacking going on. My question is, the rack and stacking, is it is it preliminary? Or is it final plat? I mean, where are we? Because if it's if it's preliminary plaits, presumably they've done those based on the current code. How do we go back to them now and say, oh, by the way, there's this policy and this applies to you? I don't see us doing that in in all due fairness to an applicant. So I would assume that the policy would have to apply to applicants after dot dot date.
And that's and I think those are questions that are probably should be asked, staff should be asking the town attorney for their advice on that. I've seen ordinances go into or policies go into effect for projects that have never been reviewed by by a commission. Before it's sort of like it's it's fresh, it's new, nobody's touched it. And I've seen other ones go into place after a policy has been adopted. But those applications that have already been submitted fall are sort of grandfathered in.
Right.
So there's there's different ways of doing it. The conservative approach is you adopt the policy and everything that's submitted after that date is going to be subject to this policy or anything in between.
Would there be, and this is and I'm just thinking off the top of my head, and would there have to be some sort of public notice and comment period? And that's a probably a question for a lawyer before we implement the policy. I know in the if we're talking code, there probably would be. But in terms of a policy, something as significant as this, I would think we would want to give public notice and or comment.
I don't think, you know, any sort of public outreach is good for public disclosure. It I agree with you that I think it's something the the town attorney should probably opine on. I think the technical answer for for most policies, as I'm aware of them, is that it doesn't require doesn't require sort of public hearing notice. Sometimes there's a slippery slope that if you do it for one policy, you have to do it for everything. And that's something that the I would be looking for the town attorney's advice on how to proceed. But as a rule of thumb, any sort of public disclosure is is always good, more is more is better. But there's that slippery slope argument that can be made made as well. So the town attorney's advice, I think, will help guide us.
Great. So let me circle back. Where are we with respect to the the charge for Mr. Dooley? Are we are we aligned with circling back next? I mean, you know, it's been a minute, 30 days. I don't know that that would cause significant any significant delay at this point. Are you are we okay with bringing this back on the agenda for December? Or is there something that we're looking to do sooner?
If the if the commission feels that it needs more time to be able to to review it and staff doesn't have any objection to to doing that, I want all of you to be able to to feel like you're you're making informed decisions and you're and you understand the material and be able to ask questions. So I think that's a good thing. Would it would it impact anybody specifically? No, I would still bring things to the commission as they're as they're deemed complete and ready for the commission to review. Again, if the policy is not in place, the commission has the ability by the code to identify what minimum standards that that the commission wants. The commission could tell can tell an applicant, we don't like the we don't like the design of this for X, Y, and Z. The streets seem they're too narrow. You need to do X, Y, or Z. And you can do that as part of the review of of a of subdivision. You don't have to necessarily approve or deny something that night. You can send them back and say, work on this some more. And then bring it back to us and address our issues. That's absolutely very standard practice in a lot of communities.
We've tried we've tried that one, but yeah. So let me let me let me poll the commissioners. Councilman Gutenberg, any concerns with enabling this until December?
Yes, I do have a concern with it. So my my what I'm hearing town staff or Mr. where Mr. Dooley ask us for is more more specific direction. He's willing to take more specific direction to give us something back next month that is got some more refinement to it than what we received tonight versus us coming back a month from now and kind of revisiting this, seeing where we are and then giving more direction. The reason why I would rather not do that is because if we are going to, and we can, we can individually litigate each one of these design choices with each applicant individually without having set a firm policy. And that's going to put us in the position of potentially giving conflicting guidance and making this problem worse for us over time. So what I would rather do is give him direction tonight to refine preliminary and secondary street designation definitions as a policy. Because it's really about how we're interpreting the existing code. We aren't, we are not changing code, but we want to give applicants a better sense, at least a better sense of what we are going to be asking of them in application of that code. And so I think that that without knowing the answer right now, we can say to Mr. Dooley, please give us that refined view of it because he understands the outcome that we're going for. And he understands, too, that we're wrestling with, you know, the implications, the follow on implications. So I think we've had those discussions here that give him enough context to bring us something that is more refined. I don't think we're going to pass next month a formal policy. But I think we can move move the ball forward and get ourselves there quicker is what my hope is.
Yes, I I would agree with that. It would also allow the staff to be able to try to engage with the town attorney to provide some initial feedback, to provide some some of his coaching or advice in terms of some of the the preliminary, again, preliminary choices, not being holding anyone to anything at this point, everything's on the table. But it it does to the Councilman Gutenberg's point does allow us to move the ball a little bit forward and we don't have to wait another month to do that. But I also understand if if the if members, if certain members of the commission or or the commission as a whole feel the need to to do further evaluation of it themselves, I completely respect and understand that. But would hope that we can move the ball forward a little bit here tonight and allow us to be able to continue to do our due diligence to bring something to you ultimately that you're going to want.
Don't you have no any thoughts?
I actually agree with what Mr. Gutenberg said. I agree with that. I think that we need clearer definitions. I agree with that.
Commissioner Will?
I agree with that, too. I think we can do both. I think we can get that part moving. We don't have to, you know, if it's the numbers that we're hung up on, you know, trying to figure out, you know, what the widths are going to be, that kind of stuff, we can we can figure out on the back end. But I think getting the ball moving and then coming back next month, too, with with some more information that we've come up with ourselves, I think that can really, I think that's a good idea. I think it's a good idea to get it.
Commissioner Miller?
So for next month, if we provide you enough guidance, we would, what would be the product that could be presented next month as far as like an outline of like, hey, these are the points that I that we recommend as far as, you know, this is what the policy would look like, let's talk more in detail about this.
Well, right now, the only Well, right now, the only thing I've, I've heard consensus on is the definitions for primary and, and a secondary local. Until I kind of hear everybody's comments, if you all have some suggestions about roadway width or right-of-way design, that would be something that we would, we would further investigate, um, if that was the desire of the commission tonight.
Yeah, I don't know. Um, I mean, personally, I don't feel comfortable saying this is the exact width that I am, am comfortable with and ready to move forward with. But, um, I guess I'm still trying to kind of in my head formulate. Like, is there any way to both have like a flexible framework where we still maintain that we can have subjective? You know, we're allowed to have the interpretation, but also clarifies expectations because there's a risk associated with that. But like, um, the document could have like non-negotiables. This is the, the maneuverability envelope for the fire truck. These are cul-de-sac minimums. And then you can have, uh, the second component would be, performance-based design where we have the freedom to kind of, uh, so I think there might be a balance of being too specific, but a-also giving us, you know, the allowance that the code currently gives us for interpretation.
That's the, and, and that's, I, I think you hit upon the fundamental problem that, that we experience with the current code is because the, at least for the secondary and tertiary roads, it does allow that flexibility because it requires the, the commission's review and approval of it as part of the, the, the preliminary plat design. The challenge is, is that when, because we don't have any, any clear definition or expectation about what the streets with should be, or what the pavement should be, or the context of when certain things should happen, that's where we're getting stumbled. That's where we stumble. And I can't tell a, an applicant, um, what the commission is likely to approve versus not approve. We can work on the definitions, but without knowing the pinch points for the commission, it's hard to move forward with, with something, because I think we have the flexibility. We've got too much flexibility in, in my estimation, because of the way the code's currently written. There is, there's a lot of flexibility, but not absolute certainty. You know what the minimums are. And if we, if we're having trouble with the minimums, then we know that we have to ask for something more. What, what is that more look like and when do we apply it? And that really becomes sort of that, sort of drilling down a little bit further from our existing code to know how we want to apply it.
The risk being the lack of consistency developers will be less likely to, um, want to work with us as much.
Well, I think there's, yeah, there's certainly the lack of consistency. And then of course, there's the, the issue that I'll get is, well, we're, you know, the engineering and the time that it's going to take to do these things. You don't know, Mr. Dooley, what, you know, what the commission's going to want to approve. It, it's hard for me to provide reasonable guidance to them other than, hey, take it to the commission. They'll review it, staff will review it and, you know, it is what it is. It, it's not really a professional answer to give to them, but I can only reflect the, the level of, of the level of comfort that I think that where the commission is and what they want to approve or not approve. In, in some, in, in a weird sense, and this is not meant to be respectful, any beyond the commission. Part of, in my experience, part of staff's job is to, after, over a period of time and getting to know the commissioners and how they approve projects and what they look for, is to sort of second guess what a project's approval ability is, uh, or what its probability is based on working with the commission and, and each of the commissioner's own issues or nuances that they want to make sure is covered. That's the ideal situation for staff to be in, but we, I can't even get to that if I don't know generally what the commission is really looking for drilling, by drilling down a little bit deeper based on a, on a very flexible code standard for secondary and tertiary streets, or even for, um, or for any of these streets, because they're just simply minimum standards. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. Um.
It's challenging, no doubt.
If you're working with a developer very early on, they don't come with you with a, a final plan. And that's the first time you've seen it. You've, you've worked with them through the early, early stages of the planning.
Well, in, in the six months I've been here, I, I have not had somebody come to me with a preliminary plat. I've had some, I've had a couple of minor subdivisions, you know, two or three lots. And that's not really a, a major concern. But to having something that's, you know, 40, 50, 100, 300 lots, I have not had that at this point. Other than, you know, developments like Pine Grove that have programmed, um, in cross-sections and they've used them in the past. The, the challenge that, that I have with Pine Grove is that I don't really have documentation of what those development standards, um, actually are. From my conversations I've had with, with the, uh, with the applicant, there was supposedly discussions that occurred with my predecessor and the, the prior public works director about, um, what the appropriate street widths and street design should be. That is what they're purporting to be using. But, you know, unless I have it writing, it, it, it's all sort of pie in the sky to me. Because I don't know how much of it's true, how much of it's not true, if there's interpretation. Those people aren't here anymore for me to, and I, there's no institutional memory because I don't have any documentation or people to tell me that's, this is how that policy came to be or why they're doing it this way. So I look at, you know, development like that as sort of, we're in a, we're in a sort of an awkward position that I can't give them specific direction of how the commission might want to change what they're already doing to be fair to them. I think we've been fair in the past for, and this, I'm just using this as an example, but like for the, the previous Pine Grove developments that the commission has seen, I went forward and, and brought the recommendations, um, because the, the, my predecessor had been previously working with them to bring a couple of neighborhoods to the commission for approval. And I didn't try to argue the matter. It's, this is what was, what was, uh, what staff is, was working on direct to, recommend to the commission. We have a new commission. We have a new staff. Uh, we have a new council. Those policies, unless they're, they're documented or they're incorporated explicitly in, in, you know, an annexation agreement or a master site development plan where it's written down, it becomes tough to, to know what's really up and down, other than relying on what our code is and, and what the, what past practices versus, versus what the current team that's in, in La Plata wants.
Yeah, I appreciate that. All that makes sense. Just unfortunately, at this time, I don't have any, like additional proposed directive or guidance that hasn't already been talked about for consideration.
Marsha Jenkins, do you have something?
Does, I would concur with the original, I, I guess, point made by Councilman Gutenberg about definitions. Thank you.
No, thank you. So, so let me circle back. While I, I see the value in, um, trying to advance this as quickly as we possibly can. Perhaps refining the definitions for the preliminary, I mean, for the primary and the secondary is important. And it is important, and that's something you can do. What I'd like to propose is that I'm going back to the December meeting. We dedicate that meeting as a working session for this policy. Given that, um, I know you have other, um, applicants, um, in the queue. I think we can push them to January. And then we use next month as a working session. I think that would be helpful for helping us to flush out and better understand the direction of the policy. It may even be helpful if you could have the town attorney here or talk to him in advance about some of the questions that we've discussed here. But, you know, having next month as a working session, I think would be, um, the next best thing to, to getting this moving.
One thing I would also proffer to the commission is that you all might provide some feedback, at least initially, on page eight in terms of whatever standards that may be created in the future. It's really not important right now, but to give me some feedback in terms of your thoughts with regard on page eight to when a, when, um, this policy might be applicable for preliminary maps and exceptions. To let me know is, is the language sort of aligned with how you would potentially use this policy in the future? Whatever we develop.
So you want that tonight?
Well, Chair Banks, I'm sorry. I, I forgot that you, you don't have that in front of you. And that's, that's not fair to you. We can certainly, we can, we can certainly discuss that in December, but I was just throwing it out as something we could, we could talk about. But if you're not comfortable, you, you have to provide that.
Well, well, let me say, fellow commissioners, I mean, I can probably.
Which attachment is that in?
It's, it's on page eight of the staff report. This is the part of the report, it's more the administration of the policy. When does it apply? What exceptions would there be to the policy, whatever that is in the future? I have it listed on page eight as eight as, um,
Yeah.
as sections A, or excuse me, sections A and B. And then we would not discuss the, the street design policy under part two.
Yeah. Yeah, Madam Chair, I, I reviewed these prior to the meeting and, and, um, those, those make sense. Yeah, no, I understand. There's a lot of material here. Um, th- those made sense to me. Um, if you were looking for, you know, modifications to that, and I'm not sure I, I had any.
Thank you.
And, you know, the, the way I interpreted it effectively, you know, we, we are talking about impacting things that are higher to being in a preliminary plat. If a preliminary plat has been approved, they've already been, they are too far into the process to apply a new standard to them. That's the fundamental issue.
Correct.
Right? Uh, the other fundamental issue is, is if an annexation or a DRRA is already been agreed to by the town, then we, we aren't going to be able to roll out a policy that negates previous agreements that a developer has with the town. There is some negotiation between the two that, that would allow for some accommodation of the policy. So, um, that, that, that's why I think this is so important for us to move forward with. You know, the, the, I've said this a number of times in here that, that I have learned, um, in a short period of time that the arc of being able to affect change in a planning commission is very long. And, uh, but we are at a moment in time where there is still more, more developers. We are in a, a zone, uh, that is set with the state and the county that because of the infrastructure that is in place here, this, this has been a place that has been targeted for development for a long time, many decades. And, and so we have opportunity to affect how and manage how that is done as, effectively as a regulator of, of the zoning and the application of policies with, with, uh, for zoning within the town of La Plata. And so we, I think, uh, you know, with our new energy, with this group of people, with the new council, I think we should use that to not be dormant on these issues. And I think we should, you know, push, uh, and work with staff, uh, you know, to achieve the outcomes that I think the public is expecting of us, um, because we, we all live here. We, we see the impacts that everyone complains about of development that hasn't been optimally managed, right? Um, at scale. Um, and, you know, we can't expect each one of these developers to, you know, individually do these things, but a- as a whole, we've got to do what's, uh, for the public good. And so we, 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 right now, we're left with individual meeting preferences as things come to us and, and having to negotiate interpretations of these codes. And I think it is very important that we, um, put a policy in place that helps to mitigate the, the, the different interpretations that we could have each time we have to evaluate a preliminary plat that has yet to be approved.
Yes, I absolutely agree. And it allows staff the ability to be able to communicate expectations of the commission upfront.
Yeah.
More clearly than, um, having, having a developer find out if the commission accepts the, the road widths and street design at the meeting. Or at that point, it might be, there, there may be a lot of pushback based on how much time and engineering went into that project.
Right, right. And there's, there's not a lot of permutations of road widths involved here. Uh, there, there really isn't. Uh, it, it is, the, the code already has very specific specifications. And so we're really, we're really just helping to lay over a policy. And, and we know it's going to, there's some, some wrinkles to iron out of it, you know, as we get, get into it. But, um, I, I think we have got to get, um, give you the direction to move, move that, move forward so that we have something to consider as a group. So we can finalize a policy, you know, uh, sooner rather than later. Yeah.
So, so I don't disagree with you, Councilman Gutenberg. Where I, where I sort of push back a little bit is that, yes, this is important. The policy is important. There's, there's a amount of urgency. But the biggest urgency with respect to development is with the APFO. We're doing a lot of pushing out of policy and, and trying to make sure that the applicants and the developers are, are, are doing the right thing and the role that we play here is significant. But separate and apart from an APFO.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's a problem. So, you know, I, I, I agree with you. Let's get this policy out. But at the same time, I push back on, on the urgency in which I think there's a, there's some due diligence on our part that a working session next month would help us to, to iron out some of that, some of that due diligence that we need to do. I saw the exceptions. I think they are good. I think they would work. But I still want to say, let's have this working session next month. At this point, um, 30 days from my perspective is not going to, um, stop the town of La Plata from, from moving forward with respect to its, uh, development and smart growth. Smart growth is the key. And how do you do smart growth? You do your due diligence. You, you don't rush, uh, particularly a policy. And I'm not saying that's what you're implying, um, Councilman Gutenberg, but I'm saying, let's just, let's just take our, let's just do this to the best of our ability, right? Are there any?
If I could, just, just because, um, I, I actually agree with you 100%. I am only pushing as hard as staff will allow in the boundary of the APFO. That literally, there's nobody who wants an APFO more than me. So I, 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 I absolutely agree with that. And I think the working session is, is, uh, is actually great. I, I really agree with that as well. Uh, all I'm asking is that we give staff direction so that when they come to the working session, they come with as much refinement as they have capacity to do for us.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Any, anything else, folks? Director Dooley, our engineer, our public works, any?
So Chair Banks, what I've, what I, I'm taking away from this discussion, and thank you very much all for your, for your comments. This is, this is helpful for, for staff to move forward. What I'm hearing is that the commission, um, it wants to at least to try for staff to, um, massage a definition for primary and secondary local and possibly tertiary streets. I heard at least, or I didn't hear any objection at this point, um, to the initial draft of how the policy would be implemented. So I, and the staff may have some additional, or Mr. Pike may have some additional thoughts on that, uh, between now and our December meeting. But that's fundamentally, uh, what I've been tasked with at this point. And I think we can certainly accommodate that and, and, um, without getting into doing any further work on optional, you know, roadway widths and, and, uh, and, uh, right-of-way standards and that sort of thing, and let the, the commission sort of, um, um, incubate on those, on those options as a, as a place to. on those options as a, as a place to start, as this is just, it's a place to start, but I think this is a, it's a step forward and and to Councilman Gutenberg's point, it's, I think it's important that, that we, we try to make progress on this. The APFO is clearly my, is my direction from the town manager, which I will accomplish. Um, and I think that the reasonable amount of work uh, for December can be accomplished.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Yes, what are the, can I get reminded of the, the rules? Like if we wanted to give you our comments and questions between, you know, now and next week, just to give you enough time to kind of work through it, so we are able to make the best use of our time for next month. Um, is there any restriction? Can I just open? Because, I mean, just on the surface, I might be able to give more, but um, like just uh, alpha C for the applicability, I think saying um, significant modification, you know, I'm not, is there any way to quantify that threshold? And then um, like for uh, in, for B Bravo, uh, what is it? Demonstrate that there is good cause to deviate. So like, com, those would be like comments to be as specific as possible. And would I be able to just email the group for comments and questions?
You can certainly email me. Everyone should be copied on it. There should be no back and forth between any of the commission members with it for the, the Maryland Open, Open Meetings Act. But yeah, I, I certainly welcome the, the comments and I'll um, make sure that those, that those comments are included um, as attachments to the December meeting, and we will address them um, in the staff report. Sure?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So just one, one final note. Uh, I will not be here for the December meeting. Um, but I will provide my, my written feedback to the, to the entire commission. Um, I'm not going to continue, I'm not going to feed off of you anymore, Commissioner Miller, but, but I, but I think you raise a good point, like when we use um, generic terms like significant, I think we need to, we need to have my experience in terms of regulatory policy, uh, there's also guidance, which is the more uh, explanatory what we meant to say. It's the interpretation of what the policy intended to say. So I don't know if that's the framework under which you all operate, but I think you have policy and then you have guidance. I don't know if that's, that's adding more to your plate or not, but it's something we may want to consider.
Do they have a separate guidance document versus a policy document?
No, the, 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 the guidance complements the policy. The policy is the overarching, well, we won't go into that in that rabbit hole because the hour is late.
I'm sort of, I, I'm, staff's sort of looking at the policy as being implementation guidance for what the commission's expectations are.
Got you, got you.
Yeah, I mean, that language very well could have been intentional to allow us to still have that flexibility, but um, yeah, I guess I was trying to wrap my head around what are we actually trying to accomplish? Like for D O D, we have, we have our, our directives and then our manuals and then our, our directive instructions and then manuals. So I was trying to put it where, how, how can I crosswalk that a little bit in my head?
I wouldn't, for, for my sake and, and, and everyone else, I wouldn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't try to.
Different country.
I think we should, I think that, I think the, the spirit of this in my mind is to try to make it as simple and, and explicit as possible, but absolutely allowing for flexibility when the, when the, when it's inappropriate to require the policy. For example, somebody comes in with a time extension. I don't think it's reasonable to expect somebody to change their streets for, for a, a, a time extension. But if somebody's coming in with a brand new project, um, then yeah, that, that certainly would be maybe an appropriate time to require it. And that's what I've outlined here, at least initially in the staff report.
I, I think that's the key role legal will pay, will play in this policy to help us to parse some of that stuff out. So um, I think we've sufficiently um, beaten this one. Um, are there any other matters of information staff report? Yes, gentlemen, do you, anything?
Wilson?
Nothing. Um, any, anything else?
No, ma'am.
No staff report?
No.
Okay. Councilman Gutenberg?
I do have a council report. I, I will, I will be quick with it. Um, so since we last met, um, I was fortunate to be able to attend the Maryland Municipal League's uh, Fall Conference. Um, and um, in, in that conference, I was, um, I was able to attend uh, one of the sessions with the Maryland Secretary of Planning, uh, Ms. Rebecca Flora. Um, and that was, uh, that was super interesting to meet her and to listen to her talk for uh, an extended period of time uh, on planning in the state of Maryland. And, and so there's a couple of things that came up that are very specific to us and things we're going to be doing in the near future uh, that I wanted to uh, just let you all know about. And it's something that I think each of us can start to watch for and read. So um, i- in general, right, and I won't go into too much detail on this, but you know, concepts and, and you know, smart growth, you used that, that term earlier today. Um, the state of Maryland is actually going away from, from that terminology and moving towards what they're calling sustainable growth. And so they are cha, so, and, and it's more than just a, a word semantics game. Um, there's some specific um, policy uh, differences that, that they're pursuing. And so I think we should watch for that and read that. And I, I'm not going to go into that, that here too much, but, but a thing that they are doing that, that we could watch more specifically in the twenty twenty-six legislative session, um, they are working on uh, legislation to simplify the comprehensive plan process, which we are, you know, right on the precipice of getting ready to start. We had con- conversations about this in terms of, of, of APFO planning and sequencing and the studies and things that will have to be done to accommodate that. Um, in, in essentially the way she described it, that I could summarize it for you is, you know, today, the, the comprehensive plan process has twelve visions, and then there's a lot of things built off of that. Um, they are uh, effectively simplifying that into uh, consolidating it into um, eight principles that will have some elements with them. Um, so those are things that, um, they're starting to put, you know, some information out. There's some things you could read on it now, but um, that, that's something to watch for this year. And you know, if that legislation is successful, will have absolutely direct impacts on us and probably be good, too, right? So um, you know, anything that would simplify that, that uh, what we know is a very complicated and years-long process is going to be very welcomed, um, you know, uh, and expensive. Yes, uh, Mr. Julie reminds us of that on the council uh, very often, uh, that that will be an expensive process. Um, so yeah, so with, with that, um, I'll, I'll leave it there. So that, that was just some interesting um, things that happened for me that I, I'm happy to bring back to you all. And with that, I'm, 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 that, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
That's excellent. Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
If, if there's no further business or comments, this meeting is adjourned.